Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 8th. We will call this meeting to order and begin this meeting as we do every meeting with our political allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will be reading our mission statement. And our mission statement is that the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Agenda item number four is our public comment. We have a number of individuals, I believe, on our Zoom and in our studio. I had a request if, I believe, Kim Smith was going to join us. And Kim, I think you asked if you could kind of lead off? So if you'd like to join us for public comment and have a few minutes to sort of...
Can you hear me? Hi, everybody. I'm Kim Smith, and I'm the Unit C representative for all paraprofessionals in the Wakefield Public Schools.
And I'm Sheila Jenta. I'm also one of the Unit C representatives for all of the paraprofessionals in Wakefield.
Good evening, administration, school committee members, and the community. As we continue with Unit C contract negotiations, we look forward to working collaboratively as we collectively bargain for an equitable contract and competitive wages for our members. While we have had positive discussions over the last few months, there are still differences of opinions on both sides. The role of paraprofessionals has significantly shifted over the last several years. We are not just classroom helpers; we are a crucial part of Wakefield's educational system. Walk into any classroom, and you will see paraprofessionals collecting data, engaging in small group instruction, modifying lessons, supporting multilanguage learners, assisting with behavior plans, and so much more. Paraprofessionals are expected to have a high level of content knowledge of the curriculum and are instrumental in the delivery of all student services. We provide reinforcement to help students understand complex instruction, work through their struggles, and assist to complete assignments. Many also have specialized training to work one-to-one with students to support their diverse needs. We assist teachers with their classroom management and preparations, execute lesson plans, and are always flexible with our schedules. If you ask any teacher, they will say, "We could not do our jobs without you." Beyond academic support, we have a significant impact on the social and emotional development of students. Students continuously look to us for support, guidance, and encouragement, whether in the classroom, playground, or the lunchroom. As students' needs become more complex, the relationships we build with students is crucial for fostering a positive, inclusive, and effective learning environment that supports student engagement, motivation, and academic achievement. Our dedication and passion have a positive impact on the lives of our students. While the administration views our current salary as a model amongst other districts, let us be clear: we are not receiving a living wage. We earn between $28,000 and $33,000 annually, which is the fourth lowest salary compared to 30 surrounding communities, and is insufficient to meet the rising cost of living. Many towns have recently negotiated higher salaries, and these salaries reflect the understanding and recognition that paraprofessionals are essential to student success. If Wakefield is truly invested in high-quality education, we ask you to provide us with a competitive wage that reflects the value of our work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in studio that would like to make a comment or a public comment?
My name is Sonia Borde. I live at Three-Border Street.
My name is Carrie Cribby. I live at Nineteen Garden Lane, and I'm a parent of four children that have been through the system and also still in the school district right now.
As a resident and a taxpayer, I am annoyed that the town never took into consideration that all of those new condominiums were going to affect not only traffic, but the amount of new students coming into our schools. As a parent of two class of 24 Wakefield Memorial High School graduates, I appreciate the education they received. During my kids' elementary school years at the Dahlberg, they were buddies to the kids on the SPED program, now known as STRIP and ICLP. And because of it, my kids got to know the great adults that were always with their buddies, helping them out all day and supporting them in all settings. Now, as an ISP or paraprofessional for six years on the ICLP program, formerly known as medically fragile, I know that what the job entails firsthand and during inclusion, how hard the job for my regular education coworkers is in a classroom with 22 kids who require a lot of social, emotional, and academic support. At least half of us paras have to work a second job at the after-school program or Wakefield Academy to supplement our salary, because the one we have working from 8:15 to 3:15 is not enough. And I am not alone. None of us paras could afford a mortgage or rent, food on the table, and transportation payments on our own with the current salary. These are all the reasons why I like to ask my Wakefield neighbors to support our contract negotiations, and to all of you, school committee members, to support the recently adopted MTA ESP Bill of Rights. The MTA Bill of Rights, from pre-K to 12 education support professionals, support professionals that play critically important roles in our public schools, providing individuals and small group instruction to students with disabilities, assisting in early education classes, supporting English learners, driving buses, preparing meals, keeping schools clean, and performing myriad administrative and educational support functions. We want a living wage, affordable health insurance, health and safety. ESPs continue to be victims of physical, verbal, and emotional abuse, bullying into workplace. In order to provide a safer environment in our schools, ESPs need adequate supplies, fully-staffed programs, clear protocols, employer-provided training, and OSHA rules, and whistleblower protections. Paid family and medical leave, job security, recognition as educators, and affordable education to strengthen our careers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in studio for a public comment? Okay, thank you. I believe, Ian, we have some folks on Zoom. If maybe we could start with, I think I see Lee.
Yep, if you call out the name, we'll get them up.
There you go.
Hi, thank you.
Evening.
My name is Leah Campbell, and I live on Redfield Road. I am a mom of two Dahlberg students, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the paraprofessionals and the contract negotiations for a fair wage. Before I do this, I want to express my gratitude towards all members of the Wakefield admin team and the Wakefield School Committee. I have truly appreciated how much effort goes into all decisions made, both big and small, always keeping our children and what is in their best interest in the forefront. I also wanted to say thank you to the amazing people who choose to go into the field of education and all its facets, our teachers, specialists, therapists, nurses, counselors, principals, admin assistants, cafeteria workers, maintenance staff, crossing guards, and janitorial teams, and today, most importantly, the ones who work in the role of paras. You are all the most selfless and hard-working group, and the very individuals with whom we entrust our most precious possessions every day without a second thought. When we moved to Wakefield four years ago, one of the first things of many that flew me away about this incredible district was the way my girls, now third and fourth, talked about their teacher helpers. Even at their young ages, they could see firsthand how critical the paraprofessionals are to the effective delivery of academic and social-emotional lessons, mood transitions all day throughout their buildings, and the opportunities for additional support for the kiddos that need a little extra. I can speak firsthand to the differences, a little extra is in the form of a paraprofessional and what it means to individuals. My 10-year-old daughter, Mia, has Down Syndrome and requires individualized support to most successfully navigate the inclusive environment she has worked so hard to be a part of. For Mia to shine and be able to show everyone that she is capable of the same endless possibilities other students have, she needs a couple of things. She has to feel safe, authentically believed in, and challenged, and this is where the paras come in. To be able to fill this role and do these things, you have to be made of magic. You have to be able to motivate, engage, inspire interest, redirect, refocus, offer positive reinforcement, and have endless patience. You have to be able to teach, help, guide, encourage, and know when to gently push. This is a lengthy list of job requirements, and if they were to all be listed on a job posting, you might be thinking it's almost unachievable. But somehow, every paraprofessional my little ones have come across so far have all these things and so much more. And don't get me wrong, paras are crucial to all students in all classrooms and for all teachers. It is not just some children or some classrooms who benefit from the skills of these amazing educators; it is the whole learning environment. Think about the list of what I share and paras do. Don't we want that for all our learners? I kind of think of it this way: teachers are the rock stars and paras are their superheroes. They are the men and women behind the curtain that are setting the stage to allow the teachers to do their thing flawlessly and confidently. Teachers can do this thing because they know they have their person who can help divide and conquer the many pieces of running a successful classroom, which can, again, on any given day mean teaching, soothing a crying student, trying to figure out why another student might not be able to understand material, helping another figure out a social situation, or teaching kindness. It's a Herculean task, but paras help to make the impossible possible. Quick shout-out to so many, Ms. Farrell, Ms. Jones, Ms. Bush, Ms. Dunton, Ms. Foun, Ms. McCarthy, the real-life superheroes who have touched my girls so far. In conclusion, I just wanted to be here tonight to support this amazing bunch and ask for any additional consideration to be made to help create a contract that allows this group to be appreciated and compensated for the priceless service they provide our students and staff. I am very grateful to have my little girls learning and being supported to reach their fullest by the Wakefield paras here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi, I'm Christine Robinson. I live on Lower Street in Wakefield, in the Dahlberg District. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on the behalf of the paraprofessionals. So my name's Christine Robinson, and I've resided in Wakefield throughout my whole entire life. I attended Wakefield's school system and currently reside in the Dahlberg District. My husband Joel and our three sons, Colin, James, were both enrolled at Galvin, and our youngest, Zach, in second grade at Dahlberg. My husband and I are permanent supporters of the Wakefield paraprofessionals. My youngest son, Zachary, is on the autism spectrum and requires continuous support throughout the day. He's been in the Wakefield School since Doyle in 2019, and at that time, he exhibited limited social skills and could only utter the word "apple." Paraprofessionals have a heartbeat of an inclusive classroom. While some paraprofessionals, like Zach, are there for him, they are woven into the fabric of each of his classrooms. They are often on a rug within arms' reach of some friends that may need some quiet reminders during a storytime or a lesson. They are quick to bring another student who may need a brain break with them and go on an errand to drop one of their students off to a specialist. They are providing small group instructions, aiding in socialization in less structured environments like lunch and recess, and serving as a trusted adult, which benefits all of the students. The invaluable support provided by the paraprofessionals has significantly shaped Zach's development. He has become more socially adept, eager to engage and play with his peers, and is gradually developing his conversational abilities within the classroom. The paraprofessional's guidance and assistance enables Zach to participate fully in his education. It's disheartening to note that the paraprofessionals in Wakefield are not adequately compensated for their essential contributions. Their dedication and hard work are individual invaluable to the education of our children, yet they often struggle with making a decent living wage. Our hope is that the admin and members of this committee do everything in their power to correct this and show our paraprofessionals the same support that they show our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Amy?
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy York, and I live at Concombings Road. I'm a parent of two children at Dahlberg. My daughter is in third grade, and my son is in first. I'm here tonight to speak in full support of Wakefield's incredible paraprofessionals because I've seen firsthand the critical role they play in our classrooms, not just for the students who work with them directly, but for everyone in the room. My third grader does not work with a paraprofessional, but she benefits every single day from me. There is paras in the classrooms supporting other students who need extra help. That allows her teacher to stay focused on teaching the entire class instead of constantly being who decides to manage individual high-needs situations. It creates a calmer, more productive learning environment for everyone. She's told me how much she loves that all students can be together in the classroom and learn from each other. That kind of inclusive environment is only possible when we have the right support and ways that paraprofessionals are a huge part of that. My first grader, Leo, on the other hand, does work one-on-one with a full-time paraprofessional. He suffers from seizures, ADHD, and anxiety, or currently undergoing testing to determine whether he's on the spectrum. These challenges make it incredibly difficult for him to engage with pets. He's often drawn and unresponsive, but his parrot is the one who gets him first. He helps him feel safe, he helps him stay present, and she helps him learn. Because of her, he's able to be a part of the classroom community. And yet, these essential professionals are being paid between $28,000 and $33,000 a year. Now, I know some people will say, "Well, they only work the school year," or "It's a shorter day, but let's do the math." A school year is 180 days, that's seven hours a day. That's about 1,260 hours a year. Someone's making, at the high end, $33,000; they are earning about $26 an hour. On the lower end, closer to $22. For that same wage, they could be working at Amazon, driving a delivery truck, stocking grocery shelves, or answering phones in corporate office. Those are important jobs, too, but they don't require the same emotional labor or responsibility or level of care that comes with helping vulnerable children succeed. Our paraprofessionals are educated. They are experts in connection, in crisis management, in patience and persistence. They make classrooms work. And if we don't pay them a livable wage, we will lose them, the jobs that are less demanding and painless. This isn't just about fairness; it's about retention, it's about stability, and it's about respect. We cannot stand to care about inclusion, about student success, or about supporting our teachers, who are not willing to invest in the people who need all of that possible. We should inform our professionals that their work matters, support their contract, pay them what they deserve, and help ensure that Wakefield remains a place where all students and all educators can play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Ian, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I believe we have at least one other person, Julie Scott.
Okay.
Requested, and I will check and see if I can.
Great, thank you. Oh, there she is. Hi, Julie.
Julie Scott. Before I begin, I support everything everybody just said about the paraprofessionals, but what I do myself, they're paraprofessionals. Number one, I have three points to make. Number one, it's hard for me to follow along tonight because the meeting packet, the backup materials, weren't posted to the website. Number two, most meetings held by this body in any form since October of 2024 and even prior to that have not had approved meeting minutes, approved at a public meeting. Prior to October 2024, it's clear that that same pattern existed. So, under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, your body is to quarterly or every six months review executive session minutes, and that is a very frequent action as well. So as a result, I will be making a request for meeting minutes as per the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Your public body will have 10 days, whether the meeting minutes are approved or in draft form, to supply them to me. You can ask for extra time, and I'll give you an extra 10 days. I will be specifically requesting minutes for all regular school committee and all school committee and its subcommittee meetings with other boards and committees held from January 1st, 2024, through today, April 8th, 2025. Number three, finally, 70% of the town's annual budget is taken up by the school department, as stated by Finance Committee Member Dan Sherman last year. The 2026 proposed budget request is a 5.94% increase over this year, with grants and funds from revolving accounts. The operational budget will be approximately $61 million, but you are actually spending more than that on a couple of things that I think are rather frivolous for the new high school project. Town meeting has not been told about the over $2 million on four massive 70-foot tall, six-to-seven-story-high building, the tie-in, the six-to-seven-story building, stadium-style field lights that have come up on a wind that are being considered for blast burn at field. And they don't place softball in the summer, and there is no softball in the fall, so it's frivolous. Along with a highway-style wall that will definitely be needed to keep the lights from shining on that beautiful, widely-streeped neighborhood that has had all the trees separating their neighborhood from our fields removed. That's not what town meeting saw in the picture that we presented of the new high school project. Town meeting will not be told about the $30,000 that's already been spent just to study that initiative for the lights on the field. Those lights with the wall will be well over $1.5 million. Taxpayers also have no idea about another plan, to make the temporary parking lot eight of the high school permanent. A study just looking into this is costing taxpayers with the $54,000 just for the design of the football. This study is in regard to the parking lot in which the Traffic Advisory Committee already stated should be only a temporary lot for very strong reasons. It's so close to the new road re that will be placed on Farm Street at the bottom of Hemlock, and it will cause traffic clogging. The Permanibility Committee should be concerned about the added costs that terrorists will definitely be bringing to our community, and they should consider these unknowns over anything else in which they're also aimed to return some money to the community. Such spending will not be reimbursed by the Massachusetts School Building Authority and would have to be paid solely by Wakefield taxpayers over the duration of the payment given by school building. With all of this being said, I am not sure that the public is assured that the school committee will be spending, and what they will be spending in 2026 represents a lean budget, as the committee chair recently stated. Take that money and really pay our paraprofessionals. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we have anyone else for public comment. Thank you, Ian. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda number five, I believe we have a consent agenda?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2025, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the April 1st, 2025, school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor. All right, I assume that was...
I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining.
You didn't offer that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Abstaining, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, if we maybe could hear from our student advisors.
All right, well...
Should we introduce ourselves?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Shay Duncan. I'm a senior at the high school.
And I'm Ahmed Altmann. I'm also a senior at the high school. So we'll start with academics. Grades closed last Friday, and grades will be posted on Power School on April 14th. For seniors, this is their last term, obviously, it's their fourth before their release on the 30th. And the senior internship program's first year has recently begun. 14 seniors began their senior internship yesterday, but are going to be participating in a wide range of different fields, including Melrose Wakefield Hospital, West Roxbury District Court, Wakefield Daily Item, The Food Project, a local Realtor, a local plastering company, and Wakefield Elementary Schools. Students will create a presentation at the end of their internship and present it to the internship leader, which I believe is Mr. Robinson.
Now on to athletics. The Wakefield Memorial High School Jazz Ensemble received a gold medal at the state finals and have been invited to perform at the Gold Medal Showcase Concert at the Hatchell in Boston on Sunday, May 4th. And the Wind Ensemble Chamber singers and trombone choir all received gold medals at the MICCA Festival on Friday, April 4th. And this is the first time in school history that all the groups have received gold medals in the same year, so congratulations.
And then, ended off, evening conferences will be held this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Most meetings will take place on Zoom.
That's it. You're blessed.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. I think we'll move on to item number six, budget items.
Tonight, in your packet, you have the financial reports from July 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2025, meaning we have three more months of this fiscal year, if you can believe that. The available balance is just over 3% remaining. That means after the encumbrances for payroll and known purchases, we have just over $1.6 million available. We still have some transportation, we still have items to complete the year, but we are looking like we are in good shape for this fiscal year. As you'll see, we'll have to do some budget transfers for the end of the year because there's a couple of lines that are slightly over budget, but that's par for the course as the year goes. As then you'll see, the grants are considerably spent. The grants have to be spent down by June 30. Those accounts do not carry to the next fiscal year. The account really with the balance is the Metco program that has slightly over $80,000 left, but that will be spent through transportation and some expenditures that are still coming to finish out the year. And the last account, the last page, is the revolving accounts. And as you can see, it shows just over $3 million, but that also means we've got one payment, one quarter of Circuit Breaker, so that's a $372 that's still there. We'll have one more payment coming in. We're hoping to carry forward two payments of Circuit Breaker to next fiscal year in order to have a buffer for any incoming tuitions in next fiscal year. That was part of the budget presentation that we did for '26. But that, again, that bars any new move-ins between now and June for out-of-district tuitions. School lunch is still being spent down. It still shows slightly over $1 million, but we purchased some, the tables at the Galvin that hasn't, that would be processed in the next week, so that balance coming down in the next couple of weeks. I'll pause for any questions on the financials.
I don't think we have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we have two payrolls in March to be approved.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 38 and 40 as presented.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion? And seeing none, those in favor. All right, that is unanimous.
We have no gifts this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Where number seven is listed as superintendent's remarks, Superintendent, I wonder if you would give me the luxury of having, taking one of my items out of order? And I'd like to invite a member of our Woodville School PTO up, and they would like to talk about something that they would like to do with the club at the school. So Caroline, if you want to join us?
My name is Caroline Baske. I'm at 10 Lila Circle in Wakefield. I'm a mother of two children at the Woodville, third and first grade, Talia and Ruby. I'm also a member of the Woodville School PTO. I'm the fundraising chair. We've had a wonderful year of fundraising. It's been groundbreaking. To date, we have raised over $57,000 for the Woodville School. This speaks volumes to our school community and the love that we have for each other at the Woodville. As a result of that, we're looking to spend some money. We have spent it so far on wonderful things. I just came tonight from a STEAM event at our school. It was an art and science fair. We did a school-wide art show, and we've done numerous things. We have Halloween parties, we have school dances, and part of our commitment to our school community as a Title I school is we do not charge for any of these events. Every family can attend every event at the Woodville free of charge. But, like I said, we have a lot of money left over, and speaking to the community of Woodville and the parents, they want to see a bit more focus with the money on academics. We've had wonderful enrichments, as I said, wonderful events, wonderful speakers. We've supported our teachers by buying things for them. We bought a guitar from Miss Schwartz. But now we turn to academics, and one of the areas that people have brought up is more support for reading or math, or a place where children can have fun and explore math more. Or a place where children can have fun and explore math more. So one of the suggestions that came up was a math club. So kids can come after school and learn more about math, practice math, do math games. And the fun that, we would, you know, invite teachers from the school or teachers from the community to be part of this program, and we'd have to pay them a stipend to participate in this program. And we're looking for ways for the PTO to give that money to the Woodville or the school district in order to pay those stipends. And that's why I come to the school committee today to ask for help and to figure out a way to make the math club happen. And I invite any questions anyone has about the Woodville School, Woodville School PTO, or about the math club.
Thank you, Caroline. I asked Caroline to come just to be part of the agenda instead of just public comment because I thought what she was asking really was part of a conversation. And so I thought with maybe Christine and Dr. Lyons, we might be able to sort of help the PTO sort of see if there was a way that we can help them with this vision that they have.
Well, I think we can certainly, we usually don't discuss, go back and forth during public comment.
Right.
So, but I think offline, we can talk about how best to do this. And so we can absolutely schedule a meeting with Matt Carter and yourself. We can come over to Woodville and have a conversation and talk about how best to do this, right? Likely it would come, there would be some type of donation from the PTO to the school system, which we would accept. And then we would, we would work out, you know, the how, what, and why likely, and also include the academy and probably in some way, right? Because the other thing that we want to do is not to create kind of an equity gap in other places, right? And so that's something that we could work out as well. So we could follow up offline?
I think that would be great.
Yes, great. Would there be a need to come back and do a motion for the gift or anything like that?
There would need to be a giving of the gift.
Okay.
Right? So, and, and that can be done. I don't know that you need to be here for the gift.
We have, there are a number of like stipends that are made, like gifts that are made to the school district that show up in the motion during a business, the business presentation. And so it could just be an approved, an approving of the gift. And that's usually where they're sort of, sort of directed to a specific function, like whether that's for a varsity coach or to, you know, a JV coach or to a music program or an art program, and probably something similar to what you described.
The check would be dropped off at central office to my attention in the business office, and we would formally accept it. And then we would bring it to the next school committee meeting. It would be on the agenda, and the school committee would vote to formally accept the gift. And then you would receive a note back saying thank you for the donation.
Great. Sounds great.
Great.
Thank you.
I think we can help. Thank you so much. You're very generous.
Thank you.
And Caroline, thank you for you and the PTO for gathering sort of voices in the community and, and trying to find really constructive ways to sort of put it back into the school. It's brilliant.
I'm excited to hear how you raised 57.
I was gonna say, that's no easy feat. That's amazing. That's amazing. Congrats.
Nicely done. Nicely done.
All right, I think we can jump back into superintendent's comments.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated. This time of year is, is super busy. The calendar is full, full. Spring sports have started with students. Third quarter has come to an end. Fourth quarter has started. We have about 48 days plus minus left in the school year, hopefully not plus. Not adding on or adjusting the calendar this term, not that we don't enjoy it, but we're just looking at the fourth quarter. We're super excited that the high school has started their internship program. That's something that the school committee gave approval to, and I think we're eager to see how that pilot goes and eager to invite students back that are participating in their internships to come back to school committee to report how things are going. Monday evening, we, we will present to the town council the FY '26 budget. Tuesday evening on the 15th next week is STEAM nights, district STEAM night from 5:30 to 7:15 or 5:30 to 7:30 at Galvin. Wednesday night is the Celebration of Learning, WEFS Celebration of Learning at, at the Galvin from 6 to 8 p.m., which is really just an amazing time where students are honored, faculty and staff are honored for their, their work in the district. So it's a kind of an exciting milestone in the year. The 17th on Thursday, we'll be presenting our budget to FinCom at 7 p.m. And during that, during the 17th during the day, VPAD will be happening. So leading up to the, the break, it's quite a, quite a full calendar, so we're, we're excited about that. And so that's kind of just where I, where we are with comments and updates. I'd like to invite Tim up to the table. We had a question from school committee, I think the meeting before last, asking about an update, just can we get an update on, on idling signs outside of the schools? So Tim is prepared to talk about that and also give a brief update on high school construction.
Absolutely. Thank you for the invitation. Nice to see everybody. Good evening. Just to provide a very brief update on idle signage, that was a project that was started in late November of 2024. In my, you know, looking throughout the district, we were able to accomplish that goal in a few of our schools. The Galvin currently has no idling signage. The Dahlberg also has a few no idling signs. We have ordered more signage and, you know, in cahoots with the, the Wakefield DPW Highway Division, they will assist us in installing the signage. And typically during the winter time, it gets a little bit more difficult to core into the sidewalk with the freezing temperatures. So now that we're in, in the thaw, even though it doesn't feel like it today, we, we are going to get back at it. I spoke with Lou Periello a few times over the past couple of weeks in talking about planning to get this accomplished. We have ordered 20 no idling signs in addition to the signs that have already been installed. That'll allow us to have adequate stock to furnish the signs that are required now, and also if things get removed or damaged, we'll have some depth in the stock to be able to replace those if they should go missing or something of that effect. So it's a work in progress. We should be there fairly quickly is the short. Does anybody have any questions regarding no idling signs? Just moving on to a little bit of a construction update, you know, if you're coming in around back here to WCAT, you'll see that some of that tarping is coming down as they start to lay the envelope of the building. They are in full roofing mode. Greenwood Industries is on site every day doing the best that they can to get a roof on this building. The current conditions rain-wise has been incredibly difficult to deal with. They are still forging ahead. We're still ahead, you know, ahead of schedule, which is wonderful. But I think we'll start to see that the roofing, you know, pick up in pace rapidly over the coming weeks as weather improves. You'll also see the purple sheathing that's being installed on the envelope of the building, which is the most exciting part for me. That's real progress. It's something tangible that you can see. They'll be working their way around the back of the building over toward Hemlock, so it'll be more visible from the street. And I think the baseball team is going to thank us so that they're not staring at a big white tarp from the outfield, so they can actually see the ball now, which is important. We've had a few student tours through the project recently, which has been fantastic. I've been lucky enough to tag along on a few of those tours. And we are in the planning phase. I've spoken with Bond, and they've, they've told me that May timeframe would be a wonderful time to invite you all to come through and, and, you know, put a hard hat and, and a fluorescent vest on and come take a peek at construction progress inside and out. I think many of you would be incredibly surprised at, at where we are and how, how quickly we're getting there. And it's just, it just is really exciting to see as you walk through the building, the metal framing going up in between classrooms and, you know, tin knockers are there and putting up HVAC components. It's just really an incredibly exciting thing to see the progress that, that, that we've come along with. So we'll be inviting you all as well as teachers to come through and, and see the progress. I think for this group, I'll be, maybe in the next week or so, be sending out a doodle poll or something of that nature to gauge everybody's availability to, to accomplish that. And we'll be excited to, to hear your responses and, and take the tour with you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tim?
Can I still come?
We would be honored.
Okay. He's a civilian.
I have heard from some people that have taken tours, and they just say that it's, it's just amazing from like the last time they had sort of seen the space. It's easy to visualize sort of the spaces that are being created, so.
We do have to give some credit to Stephanie Creppel, who is one of our superintendents on the project. The tour that she gives is like none other. She has a real knack for it, and I think that's been some of the excitement from the students that we have to get that tour. She has a, like a speaker box that she uses with a microphone and, and, you know, projects her voice and makes sure everybody can hear her clearly, and it's really fantastic. So it's, I think it's sort of a unique opportunity in construction to be able to do these sort of things, and it's pretty special to see some of these science and engineering courses, and the students come out and check it out. It's very cool.
She's a great teacher.
She is.
She's really a great teacher.
Absolutely.
And yeah, we're lucky to, lucky to have her here working.
The whole Bond team really, they've been fantastic.
I agree completely. Questions?
No, great.
Thank you so much. As always.
Thank you, Tim. Much appreciated.
Take care.
Next on the agenda is later start times. And so in our last meeting, we had said that we would get correspondence out to the community, which we did. In turn, we've gotten some email back to both Eileen and I. We responded to those emails. Some didn't require a response. Some just said, we vote for option three moving forward, you know? And there weren't many of those. There were two. You know, we did, we did a, a meeting with a parent who missed some of the information and kind of worked through some. Who both reached out to, to Eileen and I and kind of met with her or did a phone call with her and kind of talked through the information, the data, why are we making the recommendations that we're making? So appreciate the questions and feedback that we got, but that's, that's where we are there. We're in a space now where I feel like we would like to turn it over to the school committee to ask any questions that you still might have in regard to the last meeting, leading up to this meeting, and, and kind of how we might move forward and make a motion and, and vote on what you might like to see in the future for our schools. And, and then if you vote to move forward with a later start, then I, I think our, our hope would be that you would kind of direct the administration or the Labor Subcommittee and the administration to reach out to, to Unit A to talk with them about impact bargaining, what those later start times might look like. And we would, if that be the case, we'd like to kind of reach out to Unit A and hopefully start that conversation in September. That would allow us to close out the six contracts that we're negotiating right now. Give us a break in, for in the summer and then get back at it in the fall. We also need to be mindful and planning about, looking forward about not only later start times, but the new high school schedule that will need to be created for that building, along with the, the time that we're going to need to provide for faculty to actually do the move, right? Because right now we're scheduled for this move to happen in January. And that works as long as, you know, we're giving staff time and, and kind of setting this up and staging it in the appropriate ways. If we just go into the break, you know, and, and kind of don't make space for, for this in terms of planning, we might, we may be at a disadvantage. But we just want to be thoughtful about how we're going about this, but those are the irons that we have in the fire that are related to later start times, but that's, that's where we're at.
Great. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
So as a committee, I think we, we had the presentation in our last meeting. I don't know if we need to necessarily go through it, but I know that some of us wanted to leave the floor open to sort of have some additional dialogue and, and think about sort of the times and the options that were available. I, I did not get a lot of, of feedback as, as an individual from anyone out there. I don't know if many people did, if there were things that they wanted to sort of voice as concern. But my hope would be that we could, we have three options sort of in front of us. I'm hoping that we can sort of have a motion for one of those options, and we can have a discussion about what, what we're thinking as a body. We would like the administration to deal with the information that we, we currently have.
Sure. Can we throw those options on the last slide?
We can. There it is.
There, they are ready. I have it. All right.
I want to make a motion.
Anybody can make a motion. I always get torn off as to whether or not I can make a motion.
You have to make the motion and then discuss it, correct?
Yeah, we'll discuss the motion after. Move that the school committee approve option A as presented. And in power, the Wakefield Public School Administration begin rolling talks with affected parties to make necessary changes and implement a later start school time beginning in 2027, 2028 school year.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Scatlow?
I again, like I, I think I had the last time, but I'm, so I want to make sure I definitely want to thank the subcommittee for all the work that you have all done on this topic for quite a while now. And certainly the administration as well for supporting it and arranging for there to be lots of opportunities for feedback. I did think we were going to get maybe some more, more reaction, and I got zero, so I thought that that was pretty interesting. I've done a lot of thinking about this, and you know, because of all the opportunities you had provided, some of the research that's out there, the, the sessions that we had had, and kind of thinking about the agreement that the principals or athletic directors in the middle-six league had done several years ago, and when we look at where other school districts are. I think about the cost spending, you know, what's the benefit of potentially doing it? Are there any drawbacks? And, you know, I think that certainly the research seems to point to there being some benefit. I haven't read anything of there being anything negative about it. I like, and I'm glad Kevin made the motion for option A because I think it at least provides a later start time. It's within at least the minimum that the doctor had kind of mentioned, that if you're going to make a change, it's going to be 45 minutes at least, or ideally more, but 45 minutes seems to me the less disruptive of the other ones. The only thing that definitely concerns me is the time because of where we're situated, physically so close to, to our elementary school next door, and just really worried about what this farm street is going to look like and not knowing because it's going to look quite different with the construction of the high schools finished and a traffic circle being added and those sorts of things. So I think that's something we're going to have to like pay quite a bit of attention to. I think the 45 minutes too, certainly be an adjustment for our high school faculty, not as drastic as a 60-minute. But having talked with some peers that have taught in other districts and have gone through this, that many of them quite frankly were against it. So just like everything else, you get used to it, and it works out just fine, and their fears that they had had for their life just weren't as nearly as catastrophic as they thought at one point. But if this is talking with one of the students before this, if, if this provides any sort of benefit to the students, that could be really beneficial. That's congruent with the research that's out there. I think it's worth trying, and again, appreciate this kind of moving forward, so I would be in support of the motion for to adopt option A.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
Mr. Mike?
Thank you. Like, like Dr. Scatlow, certainly want to thank the subcommittee and, and Eileen's leadership and certainly the, the administration for bringing us here. It hasn't been, it, it hasn't been quick, nor should it have been. I think it needed to be thoughtful. It needed to be a community-engaged conversation. It needed to have opportunity for, for, for back and forth. I too, like Stephen and Kevin mentioned, didn't get any, any feedback in the last, you know, two weeks, which, which is fine. But, you know, we, if we had hoped for some rolling thunder, I guess we were a little disappointed in, in the lack, you know, thereof. But to be that as it may, Kevin, I agree with everything that you just said, and, and we can certainly be prepared to support option one. But I think some of the comments that you made lend me to think that, that the 60-minute, you know, window probably would be a better place for us to, to think about first. I, I, and especially given the, the working detail of the farm street and all of, and all of the complications in there. I think 15 minutes buys a lot of time in, at, at drop-off. It buys a lot of time on a busy It buys a lot of time on a busy road at the beginning of a of a school day. And it's not, and as we know, it's not just, you know, the Woodville, it's also, you know, Northeast Vocational School with granted a new entrance and some more activity, you know, up, you know, up further on Farm Street. But I think if we're going to start something, you know, new and and different, I think by making a greater impression and certainly supported by by the by the research and and by the presentations we've we've seen, I think that the 60 minute start might be, might be more in our interest to start off. It might be easier to start at 60 minutes and work our way backwards. If that, if it if it didn't work out, then really to to sort of go the other way. But certainly I can support, you know, the committee's consensus around around the table. But my inclination would would be to start off with option two.
Good. Thank you, Tom. Melissa.
I'm definitely more in support of of option A. I will say that I originally started from the position that later is better, that the the science all supports later being better and you know, even some of those science suggested like 10 and 11 and obviously we're not doing that, right? It depends on the article that you write. So we're not, we're not moving in that direction. My concern about the the hour difference actually is that the elementary school start time would be so much closer if the the high school goes in at 8:30 and the elementary school goes in at 8:45. I feel like that's harder to manage than going in at 8:15 for the high school and 8:45 for the elementary school. Having said that, I have absolutely no idea how the rotary is going to work out and what Farm Street is going to look like with the new high school. And I don't know how that would impact things. I did have a lot of conversations about youth sports and about after school jobs. And I feel like option A really doesn't impact those as much, right? I mean, I know it's only 15 minutes, but right now, high school sports start practice at three. This only changes the the end date time to 2:55. So maybe they lose 10 minutes if we go the full 8:30, they lose, you know, 25. That's a little bit, a little bit harder to do and pushing, you know, some of the youth sports back 25 minutes for elementary and middle schoolers can be tough because they all use the same fields. And over the next couple of years especially, we're not going to have as many fields as we're used to having. So I'm I'm really coming down in support of of option A. And I do think it would be, I do think it's in our students' best interest. I do believe that the science is strong and I do believe that it would impact their well being.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do either of you want?
You can go ahead.
Okay.
I usually reserve.
Okay, all right. No, I I agree. I think option A, and as someone who has worked for on this for a couple of years, option A I think would have the least like I don't want to say global, but like impact to everyone. It would affect the high school, you know, students and educators and everything. But it would not affect elementary beyond possibly traffic situations and middle school as well. One of the emails, I did only receive one email. One email was more of a question of why is the Galvin not changing? And the question for that was was because if if science is saying that, you know, affects adolescents, the middle school kids are, you know, pre pre adolescents or adolescents, they're they're right in that middle age group. But you know, one of the things that we're kind of up against is the situation with the buses. We have nine buses for our district and to not make, you know, an impact that would be a financial impact on our district, we did kind of have to see. And so, you know, I would love if in a few years we realized, wow, this really was great. And then we kind of can maybe, you know, look into something like that down the road. But that's also, I won't be here, someone else will be here. And you know, maybe that's something that can happen. But I think as of right now, I would like, I would feel comfortable with option A because it's the least impact. The same thing with like the elementary school with Woodville starting at 8:45 and high school starting at 8:30. I think that would be chaos. And so that 15 minutes gives it a little bit of a breathing room. So that's my personal why I would choose A. Will choose A.
And I will say the other, the other question about Galvin is that what's good for an eighth grader in terms of of sleep times and and the impact of of when their sleep cycles go is not the same as a fifth grader.
Yes.
So we have a fifth to eighth grade middle school that wouldn't be appropriate for fifth graders if we push the time back, even if it would be appropriate for eighth graders.
Yeah.
And unless we're going to split the schedule in the middle school, which would be a terrible idea, I feel like. Yeah, exactly. I got all kinds of bad ideas, you want us to?
I want to hear them.
Really, honestly, like someone was like, well, why don't we start school earlier? I was like, really? Like, how early are we talking, like seven o'clock, like shift change? Like, what are we, like, how how much earlier do you want the kids in school? Or like, well, field times would be more more available, they would have more time for for jobs after school. It's like, we're not starting school at six.
Day practice at six.
Exactly.
You guys tend.
Hockey team.
Hockey, who used to practice before school. I don't know if they do that anymore.
That's our next, that's our next.
Yeah. I don't think they do that. When I was in high school, they did.
Some do.
So I I like option A. One thing I would, and I appreciate what Tom is saying between the five minutes on drop off. But what I'm, what I think about when I think about elementary and and high school and their timing is everyone comes to school at the same time, but not everyone leaves school at the same time. And so I think that the the bell rings, but in the afternoon, especially if we're talking about kids with senior privileges, you know, some of the high schools getting out a little bit earlier. If we're thinking about there are kids in academy and after school programs, so you know, that's taking some of the burden off of that that population that comes through. And and ultimately, we don't know what Farm Street is going to look like in two years with the Rotary, with the Voke, who I think they just got their environmental approval to build their access roads, so.
They did.
Correct.
Just last week.
Yeah, so so yeah, so I mean, yeah, that that is a bit of an unknown, but I think and to Tom, what you were saying, I think that maybe it won't be as bad in the afternoon as it kind of looks on paper because I think people will be leaving this area, the campus as it will be at the same time. So maybe that will lessen some.
Well, I was more concerned about the morning than the afternoon.
Yeah, sure. And I like the idea of not not making the change at at sort of two levels, sort of doing it only at one level and and still hitting that that 45 minute. I was kind of nervous when we were talking about options that would be less than sort of 45, seeing what some other towns did and talking with superintendents in other districts where it felt like their process felt a little bit rushed and they were kind of cornered into coming down from some of their proposals and they said that they didn't necessarily think that they gained the benefit that would have been there. So I think it's, I think it's a good option.
Yeah, you guys, everyone has said it all. I think it's good for, going to be good for academic outcomes. I think it's going to be good for students' health. And that's it. And I think it's, I think it's a little less disruptive than option B.
Supposed to be fun.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Unless you want me to make a motion about the 6:00 AM.
I think we're okay today. I mean, you can, if you're right.
The only other question I had is in our, in our agenda, the motion suggests for the 27-28 school year. Is that what we're aiming towards or are we aiming towards a 26-27 school year?
The it's the year after next.
26-27.
Sorry, amend.
You're resetting my motion.
I fat fingered the.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure that we were like, it could have been a change.
Because we're in 24-25, then it's 25-26, so it's 26-27.
26-27.
Right. Can I re-salt the motion?
You can. Or just amend it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I like that. I'll amend the amend the last motion to implement a later start, school start time beginning in the 26-27 school.
Second.
Which being seconded, any further discussion?
On the amendment.
On the amendment?
No.
No. Okay, those in favor? Of the amendment? All right, that's good. We like changing the school year. All right. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing that, those in favor of the main motion? That is unanimous. Pete's going to be, he said he missed this. All right, so superintendent, I feel like you are empowered to work with the labor subcommittee to talk to to the various parties that will be affected by this impact bargained. And then we can sort of move the process along.
Great.
Cool. Feels a little anticlimactic, but we'll see. All right.
Confetti.
Yeah. And.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's it from me this evening.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to item number eight, superintendent evaluation. So I have at this time received everyone's evaluations for for the superintendent. I have compiled them and then shared them back out as of this evening. It is a public document, so it will end up in our packet when it gets posted. And so I thought we could just kind of go through the evaluation itself. And then if there were any questions, if folks could just sort of chime in if they if they feel like their their flavor or their intent was not adequately expressed. So for those that don't know, every year or two, it is incumbent upon us to evaluate the superintendent. We evaluate based on a number of rubrics that are supplied by DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And then based on those rubrics, those measurement tools, we take the district goals, we take the superintendent goals and we align them with those specific rubrics and and chart them based on sort of similar to a student progress report. There is a a scale. And for some things, it's there are like, did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. And then there are other components where it's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, profession and exemplary. I think it is, it is worth noting that things on the extremes of the scale are the extremes of the scale. Things that are at the very top should be like outliers. They should not be frequent. And just by by the nature of them being extra. And then things at the bottom would be if, you know, if things were on fire, which I don't think they are. So so I can walk through, so the this is the end of the cycle evaluation. The, I'll skip over the general view and just move into sort of performance goals and then and then those steps. Under superintendent performance goals, there's an instructional goal. That has to do with that we prioritize standards based on instructional practices. We use data to demonstrate and communicate progress for student groups. Grow intervention opportunities, evaluate our special ed programs, develop a portrait of a graduate. As a whole, the school committee felt that 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 goal was met. Past that was management and operational goals. That's more like environmental things like the the new high school, Niasca accreditations, collaborating with our our finance and facilities group, coming up with budgets with local town departments, whether that's police department, fire, facilities. And so that's, those are the kind of the things that that comprise that. That category was also met, which is good. Under the family and community engagement goal, that has to do with sort of reaching out clear expectations of importance of urgent, clear and compassionate communication for administrators, teachers and other staff members. Having a student information system, as in like Power School. Assess student needs in regard to counseling and student services. And evidence of progress would be beginning to update emergency and crisis manuals, streamline district Zoom calls and email communications, and increase communication regarding academic and SEL growth. That was also a met expectations. Under district improvement goal, number one, quality teaching, this has to do with differentiated PD, mentoring programs, a focus on equitable grading practices, the early literacy program, and the the finalization of the unit A contract was a part of that. Ongoing next steps will be to maintain teacher retention rates, launch redesigned plan for educational PDPs and expand learning walks, classroom observation and instructional feedback, among other things. That was also met. Just good. District improvement goal number two, rich and challenging curriculum. This has to do with sort of our our math curriculum that was reintroduced, our ELA curriculum that we are working through. And then the current work that is ongoing in our science curriculum review, all of those things pointing to ongoing progress in that area of rich and challenging curriculum. Next steps would be to focus on curriculum alignment across grades and subjects, utilizing data and curriculum resources to provide acceleration opportunities in math and in ELA and develop after school programs to supplement day school programming. That category also met, met its goals. The third district improvement goal is individualized student learning. Evidence of progress here would be targeted work in elementary intervention systems, establishing win blocks, K to eight, piloted math boost programming and refining math skills at the high school to increase participation. The next steps would be to expand the boost programs, having curriculum coordinators and special education coordinators continue to collaborate on alignment and special ed resources. Help for literacy training, continuing to focus on aligning tier two interventions and emotional support grant funded opportunities. That was also met. So across those goal criteria, they were all met. The next section is specifically related to the superintendent's performance on instructional leadership. And the rubrics for measurement here are curriculum, which was proficient, instruction, that was proficient, assessment was proficient, evaluation was proficient. Data informed deficient decision making using multiple sources of evidence related to student learning was proficient. And the overall rating for instructional leadership was proficient. The a general comment and analysis in this group, which is one that sort of leaves itself open for a comment at the end. Overall, sort of combining sort of everyone's feedback would be that Dr. Lyons prioritizes high quality teaching and learning, promoting academic excellence and supporting teachers through professional development. His data driven approach informs decisions and fosters continuous improvement, encouraging collaboration among educators. He has built a strong leadership team, filling vacancies with qualified staff and tracking positions to stay within budget. Student outcomes have improved with new curriculums and tools to track progress. And adjustments to win blocks aim to help students and improvements are expected in MCAS scores. Sharing growth data with parents and students is commendable, but tracking progress by subgroups would better assess strategies and funding. The effectiveness of new special ed services still needs to be proven. And the superintendent has established a solid administrative structure with high level curriculum. Increased classroom walkthroughs could be helpful. And we still have the, the pandemic is still impacting learning, requiring efforts to boost achievement while supporting all learners. But Dr. Lyons's leadership and experience are evident at all levels. So that, that section. Superintendent's performance rating for standard two is management and operations. And that involves environment, HR management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law ethics and policies, fiscal systems. Those were all listed as proficient and overall proficient under that standard. The comments there were that Dr. Lyons had effectively collaborated with town leadership and the finance of SOTI subcommittee to plan and communicate the new high school project, which remains on budget and on schedule. His leadership ensured the successful negotiation of a new contract for WA unit A without work stoppages and within an approved budget. Improvements to the school calendar have been made, including an early start to the school year, additional learning time, and moving professional development half-days to Fridays. Dr. Lyons provides a stable physical environment for students and maintains high ethical standards. His management style fosters collaboration and accountability affecting, effectively addressing issues within budget limitations. Dr. Lyons may need to make tough decisions regarding service delivery reductions due to rising labor costs. His supervision and leadership ensure the district's mission and vision are met through sound and transparent operations. It's like the most I've ever talked to at a meeting. Bear with me. Section number three is Superintendent's Performance Rating for Standard Three, which is Family and Community Engagement. The rubrics for that is engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. Those all were listed as proficient, as well as the overall rating for family and communication. Family and community engagement was proficient. The comments here were that Dr. Lyons excels in communication and relationship building, offering regular community calls and improving district-wide communication. He and his team have effectively communicated about the school budget, investment in digital multimedia communication, and strong relationships with community members, including town leadership and local religious leaders, has positively impacted the district. Despite challenges with COVID policies and disciplinary issues, Dr. Lyons navigates these complexities well. His leadership fosters trust and collaboration, ensuring diverse perspectives are considered in decision-making. Communication has improved significantly through community engagement and quarterly, even though community engagement in quarterly Zoom meetings has decreased. Areas for growth include maintaining open communication with dissatisfied stakeholders and creating better systems to communicate academic data to parents. Increased communication about academic and social-emotional learning growth is needed, as well as better communication regarding inconsistencies with school transportation vendors. Superintendent Performance Rating for Standard Number Four, Professional Culture. The rubrics here are commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, managing conflict. The Lyons share of those are proficient, except for the one outlier would be managing conflict, and that would, was listed as needs improvement. But the overall rating for professional culture is proficient. The comment for this group was that Dr. Lyons's administrative team shares his commitment to high academic standards and creating a positive learning environment. He maintains high professional standards and expectations, recognizing the importance of educators and staff in student success. Managing conflict with staff is challenging due to various factors, but he continues to foster a culture of collaboration, respect, and high expectations. His leadership promotes a shared vision for student success, supporting professional development in a positive work environment. Dr. Lyons faces challenges in fostering unity between staff and administrators, but he is working to improve relationships with WA leadership, addressing perceived climate issues at the high school. Building trust with union leaders through open communication and ongoing discussions is crucial. Areas of growth would include communications about grievance processes, as well as leading by example and self-reflection practices. And those are the, the chunks of the, the various standards as they exist in rubrics. I'll just jump back to the top, which is interesting because they kind of put the summary at the beginning of the, of the document. Under assesses progress towards goals, under professional practice goals, that was met. Student learning goals was met. District improvement goals was met. Under assesses performance standards, instructional leadership was proficient. Management and operations was exemplary. Family and community engagement was exemplary, and professional culture was proficient. Rate overall summative performance was proficient. And then the general comment for the evaluation process is that Dr. Lyons's dedication to quality education and positive community engagement has greatly benefited the district. He provides organized, meaningful direction, aligning presentations with goals, and maintaining ongoing conversations throughout the year. Dr. Lyons is well-spoken and genuinely interested in community relationships, even in difficult situations. He has successfully managed numerous long-term projects, including CBAs and new high school planning, demonstrating strong, long-range planning skills. His tenure in Wakefield, exceeding the average superintendency of five years, has been marked by strengths in instructional leadership, management, operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Dr. Lyons's strategic vision, collaborative approach, and dedication to student success, student success have positively impacted the district. His focus on innovation, efficiency, and community partnerships will continue to advance the district's mission. And that is what I had for, for Superintendent Evaluations. Are there any, is there any discussion?
Do you want, do you want us to look this over for the night? Just because we just got this today, or like, I kind of forgot. I just forgot.
Oh, I just forgot the procedure, like, because we'll, we're going to make a motion eventually to approve the evaluation, I assume.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Will, will we plan to do that tonight?
My thought was that it would be tonight, that it, it should be a, it should be a summation. If you don't feel like it is, like, like, let's say your point is not accurately reflected.
It's just, no, it's just that we just got it now.
Okay.
So I don't know if I feel comfortable in approving it tonight, unless like, why, I mean, I just went through it, but, um, okay.
I'm okay tabling it to our next meeting. It'll just be April 28.
Yeah, three weeks, yeah.
29.
Oh, that was sad.
There is.
That's okay.
We are, we are okay tabling. And Eileen, if you wanted to give comment, like, if we were going to have a larger discussion in, in three weeks, if there was that, you'd be more than welcome to make a comment.
At a meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Or an email, or now.
All right. I don't have anything to say right now because I haven't had a chance to read it or go through it.
Oh.
So.
All right. Okay, well, let's sit on this for three weeks and we'll come back. Okay, and we'll talk and vote on. Good? That's good. Okay. All right. Doctor, yeah, Mr. Martin.
Let me just, let me just thank you, Stephen, for, for putting this together. Having, having been in the position of having, who have done this in the past, it is not accumulating. It's like, you know, herding cats, like, myself included, to get this information together and, and to you. So, so thank you for that. And, and thank you for your summary. You know, I'm perfectly comfortable with the group consensus to, to wait until the next meeting and have everyone read. Or I would be equally comfortable, you know, voting. I think this is a, this is a fine, you know, representation of the work that Dr. Lyons has, has done in the last, you know, couple of years and, and his, his tenure here. So I just, I just didn't want this moment to leave without having said something to thank you and to acknowledge the outstanding work of, of the superintendent from my, from my opinion. And I'm sure that the group will chime in in, in three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say it was like herding cats because not one of you formatted a document in the same manner. So that was fun. That was fun.
You're welcome.
That probably goes more to me. I probably should have been more clear. That had to have been me.
I mean, it won't be the first time that I suggest a style guide for the district.
I would suggest a template.
A style guide?
My, my outgoing suggestion would be a template that someone fills in, as opposed to the document that is.
I thought that's what that was.
No, that does not correlate when you're downloading it and you try to put it in a Word doc or anything like that. It's not, it's not great.
I'll, I'll take it from the Nat Geo.
Yeah.
I'll take the critique.
You know, I'm on there with, with polar bears and all sorts of things, so I know these things.
I believe you. I believe you. Okay. Well, that being presented, I feel good about that. Thank you, Dr. Lyons, for sort of having all of those meetings that you had with people that sort of had questions. I know that there were a number of, of committee members that sort of came to you with their, their reviews, their evaluations. And it is a long process, and we haven't done it for a couple of years, so this was good.
Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah. Okay, I think that is, that's about it for my comments. I would have said something about the Galvin Steam Night, but, but you already captured that, so. I will say I did come from the Woodville. It was a, it was a science fair slash art show, so they really put the A back in steam, which was brilliant. It was something that the PTO put together. They got a grant from the Mass Cultural Association. They came in, funded a, a young lady, Alex. Alex makes art. She came in, people brought in a number of fabrics. They were cut up and torn and whatever, and, and handed out to all the, the kids in the school in various little stages of, of making of art, everyone from pre-K all the way up to fourth. And so they've made, they've made little squares that are all sort of mosaics of fabric and, and strips laced in like fencing. And so now they're going to sort of put all those pieces together, and it will be a, like a public piece in the library over at the Woodville. But what a way to sort of engage. I love that anything where there's collaboration, and it was collaboration from the youngest to the oldest, involved teachers, involved parents, and it took some, some well-sourced state dollars to sort of have that happen. And having talked with, with the gentleman from Mass Cultural Council that came, he was really happy to be there and to see it, knowing that sort of their, their money was going to a, to a good cause in a right place. And he did say he loved seeing the science surround the, the art, and was really impressed by it. So just other great things that are happening in our district. All right, so I'll move on to agenda number nine. No, before I do that, I will take one other chair comment to say today is, or tonight is Eileen's last meeting. And so I think we'll, we will take a pause just to say, I mean, thank you so much for your, your three years on committee. I, for one, have sincerely appreciated your voice. I know sometimes it's been easier than others. And so I, I just love that you've, you've sort of been fierce in your, your advocacy for sort of students and families and situations. And I think you, you never came into a conversation sort of predisposed. You've always been open-minded, which I think is greatly appreciated by, you know, a board such as ours. It's nice that we can have those discussions and have them be in-depth and sort of still appreciate and value everyone's input. So I think you've been crucial in that for the years that you've been on school. And thank you to Joe for, for doing all the other things that happened behind the scenes.
Yes.
And, yeah, and your hockey families as well.
He will appreciate that.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll miss you, but come back anytime.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I wanted to say that before we got too later into the meeting, you know, for everyone that tunes out once we get into like, Subcommittee reports and stuff, because, you know, it's important. Yeah, right? All right, well, Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Facilities, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. We have met since our last meeting. Essentially, the agenda was a debrief of our, of our, of our, the Saturday session we had with the Finance Committee liaisons. Some of the, some of the points that came out of, out of that, that debrief was we thought that, that, that the, that the Saturday session was, was productive and was, was fruitful. And something that we think we want to add into the, the annual, you know, budget, budget development agenda. Certainly for the, for the, for the foreseeable future. So, and certainly we, we, you know, had a, had a thank you to our partners at the town, not just the Finance Committee, but Mr. Mayo and, and his team, as they had attended not only some of our preliminary meetings leading up to the Saturday session, but certainly were, were, were in attendance and were an active and vibrant part of, of, of the Saturday session. So hopefully, hopefully, our, our, our friends at the Finance Committee, you know, feel the, the same way. And we certainly would welcome feedback on how to improve, you know, improve that process. And as we always want to do, continue to improve the relationship, because it's all about that, right? We also just talked about, you know, some of the things, some of the steps leading into, into town meeting and getting ready for the presentation before Town Council and the presentation later in the week to the Finance Committee itself. And, and then what, what sort of some speculation around, you know, leading into actual town meeting come, you know, come that, you know, come that time. So we had a facilities report as well from, from Tim about just some, some of the, the ongoing work, some of the priorities and projects that will be undertaken during April School Vacation Week and such. So it was, it was a productive, it was a productive conversation. One of the things that I'd like to add, if I could, as a bit of an editorial, and it's not my invitation to give, but I would encourage anyone that may be so able that, that MASC, the School Committee State Association, sponsoring their, their annual, you know, Legislative Day called Day on the Hill on May the 6th. I have, I have signed up, and certainly all of us are, if we're able, able to do so, I would encourage that. This year, I, I think there's a particular, a good, a number of policy matters that almost will, will trump, no pun intended, some of the finance, you know, matters that we're, I think we're going to be discussing or hopefully hearing about and being asked to provide some feedback on some, some, some notable, you know, policy matters and, and philosophical, you know, points of view about what we expect from our, from our elected officials. So our capacity to rally and to, and to attend when we have an audience, I think is real. So if anyone can make that day work. I have had the opportunity to discuss with our State Senator's Office a couple of, of the priorities that, that are before his office and before the education, you know, Subcommittee. So a couple of things that I would, would think, and, and will be on the agenda for our next Finance and Facility Subcommittee meeting to perhaps build some consensus around a couple of these issues, which you'd like to bring to the Subcommittee and then bring back to the full body as, as any of us get ready, or myself, get ready for, for May 6th. One is, is what Chapter 70 is, is looking like. The Governor's Budget has Chapter 70 back to the, to the $75 per person. It was at, it was over $100 per person. The House will be, will be debating, and though I understand or appreciate there'll be an amendment made to make it at $104 per, per, per student. So some advocacy there, going from the Governor's Budget to what the House will likely be, be debating. Senator Lewis is, has worked with a Republican colleague to put forward a bipartisan, you know, piece of legislation to renew the Chapter 70 Commission, which hasn't been, hasn't been in, 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 in active status in, in years. But I think part of the advocacy that, no, not just, not just the community like ourselves, but communities, you know, all around the state are quite concerned about where Chapter 70 lies, some of the inequities there. So it's, I was pleased to see that Senator Lewis was taking a, taking a leadership position in not only reaching out to colleagues across the aisle, but hopefully that will take, get some, some steam coming out of, of the legislative session. I think one of the things that hasn't hit, at least although I advocated in, in a recent, you know, you know, conversation, is a circuit breaker. The circuit breaker is, is, is in the Governor's Budget at 75%, which is what it's been for, for, for some time. But certainly some advocacy around fully funding that is, is a tremendous advantage to school districts. So those are some of the things that, that are, that are happening that are before the state legislature that even if we want to take the town administrator's lead as, as he sort of challenged. lead as, uh, as he sort of challenged us, and I think he was spot on to do so, uh, to, to speak out.
Yeah.
So with those, some of the issues that are, that are, are immediately impactful to Wakefield and immediately impactful to communities like Wakefield, um, and us having a unique advantage of Senator Lewis being the, the Senate Chair of, of Education. So anyways, that's sort of what I was, was thinking about and would like to, uh, have a, a Finance Subcommittee meeting between now and our next meeting. And then maybe, you know, maybe we could, I could ask to have some of these as an agenda item to build a little steam around going into May 6th.
Yeah. Great.
So, thank you.
Okay. Labor and Personnel, Dr. Biscatla.
Thank you. Yeah. So we've been busy, as we alluded to earlier, uh, with our negotiations, particularly with Unit C. On the 28th, since our last meeting, we had a negotiation session on that Friday, the 28th, um, kind of went back and forth with a couple, um, couple of proposals. We met then this past Monday for a strategy session in preparation for our next negotiation session is scheduled for Monday, this next coming Monday at 5:30, uh, but it's going to be a venue change. We're going to be here in the Volpe Library, uh, here in the high school. So, um, making some good progress, I think. Feeling pretty good about where things stand. We were thinking, Stephen, maybe executive session, um, prior to our next meeting for an update.
Yep.
So then.
Yep.
Brief the committee and, um, welcome our new member with an update on kind of where things stand.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Lyons, will you raise your hand?
I, I can wait till we're, we're done now. So just, just, I don't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to Eileen. From the district administration, from the principals, from faculty and staff, thank you. Right? This is a, not an easy gig.
No.
Right? There's not a, a long, long line to, uh, to serve and to do board service in this space, and it's really hard. And, uh, and no matter what decision you make, it's, it's wrong to someone, but I think you've left it better than you found it. And, uh, and that's a testament, I think, to your hard work, and, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, so thank you.
Thanks.
So, and I know we're going to continue to work together.
Yeah.
On CPAC.
Oh, no, you're not done with me.
Yeah. But I wanted to say thank you.
Yeah.
So we, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and, and I think just my only other comment is just to add to, to Tom's comments about, you know, um, really the need for us to, to really, um, be thoughtful about kind of reaching out to our legislators, um, because we're in kind of a precarious time, um, in regard to budget, right? We, we need a kind of, uh, a more significant, um, position on Chapter 70. We need a more significant position on special education, um, and as well as transportation, right? And so, um, we're, we're kind of, um, we're feeling it in those spaces, right? And the, and the fact that we haven't been funded, um, as other districts like us have been funded is, is really something that we need to be thinking about and advocating for. So that's just, uh, so, Tom, thank you for your comments there. And I think that, you know, we'll have more to talk about in regard to our own kind of collaboration and outreach that we're doing as a superintendent group on the North Shore to our legislators as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So back to Eileen for Student Services.
Um, we are going to have a meet, one last meeting, um, as, uh, well, not, not the students, the Student Services will go on. But one last meeting under my.
It's over. You're tabled.
It's no more.
I'm out of here. It's over.
No, we will have, um, a, uh, one last meeting under, under myself as, as Chair, um, and just to kind of talk about a few things, wrap a few things up. Um, and, uh, and then that, that, that will be the official last meeting for School Committee for me, but this is the last big one. So, um, so that will be next Tuesday at, um, the 15th at 4:30 PM over Zoom, and that was posted, um, to the town, so.
So, great. Thank you. Policy and Communications, Mr. Davis is not here. Melissa, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we, uh, reviewed the Policy Book E, um, some changes to Book F, which we, um, are bringing more in line to the Town Charter, and Book H. Those have all gone to our council for review and we're going to integrate those changes, which we just got back, and have them for our next meeting.
Great. Thanks. Um, any liaison reports? Any? No? Okay. Um, future dates and agenda items? Our next meeting will be in three weeks due to the break. Um, so on April 29th, we will schedule an executive session. And then we'll, uh, try and put on the agenda maybe having a conversation around sort of Chapter 70 and what we can do, um, to reach out to our legislators. Um, all right. Item number 11, School Committee Comments. All right, Kevin?
Uh, so Eileen, um, we ran for this thing three years ago. Didn't know you at all. We kind of got roped into it, literally. And, um, and yeah, uh, so I do consider you a traitor. You trained me for not, not running again with me. No offense to Tom, or the elder statesman. I mean, that's like, you've been here, you know, but, you know, I, I lean, you'll hold a special place in my heart for going through that, going through that with me. And, um, and yeah, I consider you a friend, and I'm very glad I met you and worked with you. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Biscatla?
Um, I like that the goodbye to Eileen's been sprinkled throughout the meeting. It's not just at the end. But, yeah. It's a very long goodbye. But I too, you know, my, my sweet man, I seatmate over here, uh, on this side of the table, it's been a great three years. I think it's gone by incredibly fast. A few weeks ago, um, I think at one of the negotiation sessions, Christine mentioned, no, she's running. I was like, what? Really? Has it changed? So I text her right away. Like, you know what? She's like, hell no! And then died laughing like she was right now, so. But I know it's a lot, and, and I'm really appreciative of what you brought to the committee. Everyone brings something a little different. I think your contribution has been great, um, and I'm going to miss, miss having you over here. So I'm also going to have to learn my little looks and stuff from, from the side and know what they mean, because I think she's started to learn with them and now is leaving. But, uh, definitely wish you well. Do, do definitely want you to remain engaged because I think your perspective and your, is incredibly valuable. Um, and I know you've got some things you really care about and will continue to keep working, um, with Doug and hopefully with all of us. So, yeah, going to miss you, um, but really want to wish you well and thank you for everything that you've done, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Melissa?
I'll jump out the bed, I can just say, you know, thank you for helping me in my first year. It's been great working with you, and I'm not going to say goodbye, but see you real soon.
Good call.
Tom? Thank you. I'd like, I'd like, Kevin, thanks for viewing this, you know, three years ago, and in, in the same, in the same, you know, cycle. But it has been a extraordinary, you know, three years. Like, like others have, have said, but you have, you have brought a voice and a passion and a spirit and a heart that is really second to none. Um, and that has been extraordinary, and that's going to be very, very missed.
Yeah.
I'm sure that, that we have passion across the town and across the district, um, but really, um, you have brought something so, so unique and so wonderful to speak, um, for the, for the, for the, for the students and the families that you, that you, that you know and those that you don't. And you're going to be so missed. But I know you're not far away.
No.
Um, and we'll, we'll come and find you and track you down and engage you in, in School Committee alumni affairs.
Yes.
But, uh, but please, thank you very, very much for your work, your time, your commitment, and, um, and, and, and the, the time away. It's not, it's not insignificant, the, the, the work and the hours and the, and the, and the anxieties and the frustrations and, and, and all of that that, that come with the work. But it's really all worth it at the end of the day when we are able to land in a common square and, and perceive that we're doing the right thing for students and families. And you're a leader in that work with heart and soul. Thank you, Eileen.
Thanks. Can I say a few words?
Yes.
Um, I had something prepared, but I'm just, you know me, I'm just going to go from the heart. I, first and foremost, want to say to the, all of the community that has sent emails that came on tonight, the paraprofessionals who came into the studio today, I just thank you for all of your work. It's, it is something, I'm going to get emotional. You know, this is, wouldn't be a School Committee meeting if I'm crying. Um, I, I do understand the power and the significance of a paraprofessional in the building. My two, I have two children who benefit from amazing paraprofessionals, Ms. Abanaro at Galvin and a bunch of, uh, paraprofessionals at Dolbear. And, um, and, and just walking through the hall, I saw Mrs. B from the high school who was, I remember her from high school, and that just sent like all the chills and all the memories, and I just, just know that you're so loved and I just, we, we love you and we need you and just know that, um, we, we, we know how important you are. So I just wanted to say that. Um, oh, God, why do I always get these things? Um, and then I just wanted to thank all of you because I know I'm not easy. I'm very passionate. I, 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 I go from here, I'm not so much here all the time. I, I leave with my heart, and I know that can probably be frustrating sometimes. I know that I'm like that as a parent, and I'm ferociously protective of my children, um, as well, and protective of all the children in the community. And so, um, I will be continuing my work with CPAC in the fall, so you will be seeing me. And I will be, um, following, you know, where my heart, my passion leads me and where I think I can make a lot of difference. I'm not saying I didn't make a difference here. I'm just saying I, I feel like I can, I can, you know, make some difference there and help out the community.
You're not done.
So.
You're not done?
I'm not done. I am taking a short, uh, break. My husband asked if I could take a break, a break from volunteering for a few months, so I will, um, be reaching out to the team at CPAC, uh, come the fall and, and ready to hit the ground running, so. Taking a much-needed break.
Terrific.
From volunteering. But thank you all. You all are tremendous. To the public, the, the amount of hours that goes into this, this volunteer position is, is a lot, and there's a lot of dedicated and passionate people here that care about the children and, and the community, um, Wakefield Public Schools as a whole. So just know that they are the most incredible people, um, and even past members, Mike, Amy, I mean, just were very passionate people. You wouldn't do this job if you were not passionate about it, so. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. CPAC is lucky to have you, and there, and you could not have picked a better organization to sort of partner with.
They're amazing. They're amazing. They, they made me cry at the first, that was the first time that I cried at a School Committee meeting, so, uh, was because of CPAC, so.
That's great. Look forward to hearing from me in that seat. That's going to be great.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yeah. Move that the School Committee adjourn its meeting on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion?